Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. We are in the governor's room. We will call the meeting to order at 5:02 PM. First thing we'll do, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we need to consider and adopt the agenda. The agenda is in front of you in the packet and in the board book online. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Kimberly, do we have any requests to speak? All right. Next up is the consent agenda. We have in front of us, page three through 13, and also online on the board book. And we'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will say I did look at the bills and things seem to be in order after a little extra work, but they, they're in order now.
Thank you, Treasurer Kaut. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
With the resumption of the teaching role of Mr. Keating, I'm assuming that we have a science teacher for that role?
Yes, he was on leave of absence for a year. And because of that, we didn't have to make a cut in the science department, so now.
Continuation of that individual. Perfect.
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We do not have any student spotlight because it's the summer. No student council report because it's the summer.
Given that it is summer, but school starts obviously in the very, very near future, is there a possibility to have a student council rep or is there?
If there's, if the student council officers are, are not as heavily involved in activities, they will be the representatives. Otherwise, we're going to reach out to, we're going to go to the National Honor Society and see if one of their, one of their kids is going to be able to do it.
And that's to be a really good.
It is really nice to happen.
Oh, absolutely. And be a really good experience for those other students as well.
Yep.
And spreads out the opportunities. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll move on to our action items. Item number one, consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. Dr. Graff?
Yes, we have four donations to talk about this evening. The first one is the governors. The governors donate time as instructors for a percussion program. And then they also have donated $750 to help to defray the costs of that program. Next is a donation from the St. Peter Booster Club for $11,367.49, and that's to cover the final items that were purchased in '24, '25. And then lastly, a donation from St. Peter Youth Wrestling Association for $10,624. And that donation will be used for a rollout protector mat to cover the practice mat in the wrestling room. And then Annette is here to talk about a really, really large grant that we have.
Yeah, this one is really exciting. Our partnership with, through our partnership with Habitat, we co-wrote a grant for the, to the Minnesota Housing Challenge. And we found out this spring, late May sometime, that we received $99,999. Again, the majority of that will go toward building materials, but the school district is getting $20,000 worth of new building equipment to assist with the build. And we were ready for some new equipment, so it came at a great time.
And that's due to the history of the job with that builds, do you think?
With what?
With the number of builds that have been done.
You know, I, I don't know. The grant was, I don't know why I ended up reading the email because some of those come through and you're like, but it just seemed like the grant was specifically written for school partnerships to do with housing. So, and they were also very interested in the job, the job opportunities for kids who had taken the course. So, that was part of it, too.
Just out of curiosity, $99,999, was that the limit on the grant?
Yep.
Was that what we?
That was the limit.
Just a curiosity.
Yeah.
It's an interesting number.
Yep.
Incredibly generous and great. Like, it's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Maxed it out.
Maxed it out.
I think there's a, there will be another opportunity to write another one, so that would be great.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. It's exciting. Scott Robinson had a lot to do with this one, too. He's the teacher who does the build.
I move that we accept these grants and donations and gifts.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much to the generous donors and to the grant givers. Next up, consider adoption of student-parent handbooks for 2025, 2026. Dr. Graff and others.
So, on an annual basis, buildings review their student-parent handbooks. And if there are changes, those changes are presented to the school board with a recommendation to approve those changes. And tonight, the principal team is here to present those changes. These changes have also been shared in advance with both the policy committee and the education committee, and both supported the changes.
First, how about that?
Second youngest. I'll start with me. I never get to start. I'm going to start. I'm going to start. Updates with our handbook at North Elementary School, just about five of them, just minor language things. On page nine, we put some specific information in there as far as running a background check. If, this goes a little bit beyond what we had before. Usually, it was a typical, somebody coming in to volunteer on a regular basis, they would have a background check. But now, it's like basically any school-sponsored thing, field trips, things like that, where our volunteers are supervising our students. So, and we'll keep track of that in the office. So, that specifically is in there now, so that's a change. Also, on page nine, check-in procedures, present a valid government-issued ID. Everybody had to check in anyway, but just put that language in there about government-issued ID. A daily attendance tracking has shifted a little bit. Now, if a student arrives after the start of the instructional day at 8:00, but then prior to 8:15 in that window, that's marked as a tardy. Anything after 8:15 would be an absent. And prior to that, we had tardy all the way up until, what, 9:00?
9:00.
9:00 AM, so it was an hour. So, it shortened up that quite a bit. So, that's in there. And then we also, between north and south, we actually track attendance by the minute, the instructional minute. So, that has an impact. If a student leaves early, gets there late, basically, that's subtracted by the total number of instructional minutes, which are 500, or excuse me, 400 minutes a day. Let's see. Student expectations at high school athletic events. Any students that may not be following expectations in those events can be asked to sit with their guardians or their parents or be dismissed from the event. And that's new language in the handbook. Yep, yep, yep. Watch the game. Cheer on the Saints, absolutely. And then just page 17 has building-wide student assessments. Just a little more dialogue and narrative in there about the assessments that students take in second through fourth grade and what they measure. And then that, along with just policy update in the appendix of the handbook. Thank you.
Can I ask a question concerning the government-issued ID? Is that going to be a problem with some of our immigrant families?
We have been doing that already. So, our Raptor system, which, you know, people bring in their IDs and drop it in the scanner, which then generates a log on the computer of who they are because it pulls that data off that magnetic strip on the back and then makes them a name tag with their picture and everything. So, that's been happening, but we just didn't have the language in the handbook. So, I don't think, no, it hasn't been an issue.
I mean, so what's acceptable? Like, a driver's license?
Yep.
Anything else?
Passport.
Passport?
Yep. Yep, good question. It hasn't been, like, we haven't had an issue so far. And that's in all our buildings.
Well, I noticed it's in all your handbooks, too. That's, thought I'd just get that one out of the way.
Yep, yep. It has not been, good question, but it hasn't been so far.
So, do you think maybe you could add something to the handbook about expectations? And if adults don't live up with that, they have to sit with their kids?
Yes, done. You must stay with your children, your students. Yep. All right.
I can go from South. So, I've got, I updated just some basic things like our principal letter and our conference dates. I also added some information in our academics section about our grading scale. We had some questions about that last year from parents, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of things in that. We also added information about our universal screening for new Read Act requirements. And there wasn't previously language about math and SEL screening, so just in order to be transparent with families, added that in. Second thing, the information about attendance and tardies, we just adjusted that to be consistent with North Elementary. Added, we also added some language about encouraging third-party documentation. So, right now, if students are reaching significant absences, we do request that they bring in third-party documentation for excused absences, just to confirm the absence. And now, the language just really encourages everybody to bring that. It's really good practice. So, there's just some added verbiage in there. We added clarification about government-issued ID when, not only when entering the building, but also if you're picking up a student, so that if you're not the parent or we don't know who you are, we can confirm that that's a safe adult for our child to leave with. We added language about drop-off and pickup, stressing the importance of using our loop instead of the parking lot, just for safety. Under guidelines and procedures, we just cleaned up some language about recess. School visits, not including recess, that that's lunch unless the visit specifically was a request for recess. We added scooters to our policy. I'm sure you've seen scooters all over town this summer, but there was nothing in there about scooters. It was just bikes and skateboards previously. Updated language about flexible learning. We've not sent iPads home in a number of years, so just making sure that was in there. I'll be talking about this more later, but we removed our information about snack cart. Added language about treats. This is a big deal at South Elementary. Birthday treats, half-birthday treats, 100th day of school treats. So, it's important to, to be safe and have language in there. We updated our athletic information, admissions costs, and athletic passes. Under technology, we added a device policy per MSBA recommendations, just that we are not allowing devices in our classrooms. We previously didn't have it because we didn't see that with five, six, and seven-year-olds. And now, they have fancy watches and things like that, so just adding that language to our handbook. Added something about AI. And in our health section, we have just cleaned up some language about recess. Added language stating that medications that families leave will be disposed of if not picked up. And then included the house that is too sick handout from the health office and updated policies. Can I just roll into Ashwa? I only have two at Ashwa. The two at Ashwa, we added lang, or just changed the language about our rotating electives. It was very specific previously about the electives that were rotating. And with our change in staff, that's just no longer accurate. So, we made that a little bit more broad, not promising more than we were able to deliver. And then under devices and internet, we added language about monitoring computer activity with Securly, which is a software program that teachers use to monitor, monitor what kids are doing. And again, we just want to be really transparent with families. If we're calling them and saying, hey, we noticed this through Securly, that they're not surprised that we're monitoring. That's all for those two.
We just skip all over the place tonight.
In the high school handbook, that those first ones, we're just cleaning up. We're adding some language that we noticed during the school year was confusing to some students. So, students can be referred to the structured or guided study hall, which means they, they're supposed to be studying off of their devices, that sort of thing. They can also be placed there for behavior referral or poor attendance. But that is reviewed at mid-quarter and at the end of the quarter. So, they have all kinds of opportunities to work their way out. Attendance, the only change in that is that non, that num, excuse me, it's a letter, letter G. Work is not considered an excused absence. Our co-curricular participation, we wanted to clarify that if doctor's appointments, those sort of things were, those are approved absences, but otherwise, anybody who wants to participate in their co-curricular activities that evening has to be in school for the whole day. And then there's our technology and cellphone use policy. It, it might not look like it's a big change, but it is quite a big change. If you look at the former language, cellphone use in the classroom will be allowed per teacher discretion. And teachers were to have their cellphone policies posted in their classrooms. With the help of the school board policy, cellphones are not allowed in, in what we have determined to be the academic areas, the classrooms, that, that pod space, the shared space between the classrooms. They are allowed to use it if they have a common study hall during passing time or lunch. And again, it's still, you know, it's up to the classroom teachers to, to police this, but I think having it in board policy gives them a little bit, you know, it's their, it's their job to, you know, make sure they're not using it during class. I'll keep you updated on how it goes. I'm sure it'll be great. If they are, it, we're really kind of following the same process that we always have. Teacher takes their phone, second time, comes to the office, third time, parents will pick it up. And beyond that, then it will be a family, family meeting to try to determine a course of action.
And that's consistent with the middle school policies?
And South Elementary.
Not North. We do, we do one and done. It is, like, basically, if they're using it in a way that they're not supposed to. They, they keep them in their backpacks or lockers or whatever, but if they have them out in the class, like, the teacher just takes them, go down to the office, and a parent comes in and gets it, picks it up.
Just a curiosity question. Obviously, it's going to change from high school to, to South. Percentage of students that would have cellphones? Like, 98% of the high school or whatever?
99.9% of the high school.
All of them.
Unless we have it in the office.
And that's all?
Not many South students have cellphones, but we're seeing more and more smartwatches. I would say 10 to 15%, two or three kids per class.
That's significant.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Same at North. Two, probably two to three of these, maybe four. But then you see fourth graders will have cellphones. And some third.
Do they answer them when they ring?
In their lockers.
No, not really. But I answer them if they're ringing in the locker.
So, the theory is that as they get used to this policy, it'll just move on up and it won't be a big deal. But good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I've echoed a lot. I've relied on my counterparts here to kind of help me as this is my new year going in. So, some of the pieces are very similar. After-school co-curricular events, same as what North had put in there. Just if they're not meeting those expectations, they will be asked to leave or sit with a parent. Guidelines and procedures for visitors, same thing, government-issued ID when they come in as well. Technology, the Securly, just making sure that our parents, caregivers know that the, they're monitored. Teachers are monitoring this with Securly classroom. So, and then the last one, we didn't really have a piece on assessment, so just giving some background on why we do the assessments and what type of assessments. But then it also led into our Read Act. And so, grades four through 12, there's a no component for that piece of it that we'll have to continue to pay attention to as we continue to move forward. And then the appendixes.
I move to accept the changes to the various samples.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, further questions?
I do have one question, and then I promise I'll quit asking things. If a student is 15 minutes late, 8:17 they arrive, they're considered absent for the AM or PM if they leave early in the afternoon, correct?
A stu, if a student?
Is more than 10 minutes tardy for a class, they're considered unexcused absent at the high school.
Okay. So, if it's an unexcused absence, it obviously is an issue in and of itself. But if there is a high-stakes examination of something during the time they're absent in an unexcused fashion, they still can partake of the test, et cetera, correct?
Yep.
So, the consequence is really what?
The consequence for a tardy?
Yeah.
Once, once that, so, so unexcused absences add up, can add up really quickly at the high school level. It's, once they hit three, and that can be in different, just different days, different class periods. It doesn't mean they're even gone for a whole day. They kind of enter that, they enter the, pushing the, pushing the boundaries of truancy. And at seven, that is actually a referral to the county, and they're, they're considered truant at seven unexcused absences. So, that also gives it some teeth at the, I think it's 12 and under, it's considered ed neglect. But 13 and over, it's.
Like I said, that can compound very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can.
Thank you.
And in that example, a single unexcused class for your morning would also make you ineligible to play your sport that day.
Yep.
Which we might see. I can imagine seeing that frequently.
Can they practice?
No.
I feel like the consistency that you have put into the handbooks on all levels is really good in the fact that it's no longer, the teacher has to take the blame for something, that it's all right there. And the decisions then are easier to make, and the kids can understand a consistency. It's nice.
Our attendance has been very good. You haven't heard of it?
Yeah.
And then I notice.
We've been working hard on that since COVID. So, we're among the highest in the state. We were at almost 95% of students attending school regularly at the high school. Yep.
Good place to be.
Yeah.
I noticed one of the changes is that work is no longer considered an excuse for absence. I'm asking you because I think it probably would happen at the high school more than any place. What if the parent keeps the student home for part of the day because they need childcare?
No.
For?
That's also not considered excused.
Can they get out of study hall to do that?
If they have junior or senior priv.
Okay.
Consistent attendance is very important, so we are, we have been.
But just so parents realize that now, too.
Yep.
And we're trying to remain consistent with our policy and state statute on that attendance.
Showing up, quote-unquote, is very important for life.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We've adopted the handbooks. Thank you all very much. Next up, consider adoption of changes to the 2025, 2026 mobile device handbook.
Yes, so once again, every year, we review the mobile device handbook. The mobile device handbook outlines guidelines and procedures for our one-to-one program. The big change, and not that it's substantial in terms of our management, but we've removed reference to iPads in the fees section of that because our students who sign that are grades five through 12, and we no longer issue iPads to students in grades five through 12. So, Gus just changed that to reflect our current practice.
This does require a motion.
I move that we accept the device handbook as stated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The changes have been approved. Item number four, consider adoption of changes to the 2025, 2026 crisis management plans. Dr. Graff?
All right. Per policy 806, our crisis management or emergency action plans, as we call them in the district, require annual review by the board and approval. And there are some substantial changes to this year's emergency action plan or crisis management plan, however you want to call it. And they can be summarized in three different categories. The first category is the adoption of three crisis management teams. We've always functioned with two, but guidance from Homeland Security and policy 806 suggests that we should have three. So, those three teams are a district emergency response team. We call that the safety and security team. It's made up of administrators and school resource officer and nurse. That's the team that kind of drives the district policy and practice around safety. The new addition is the building emergency response team. So, each building this year will create and function with an emergency response team that governs the practices of each building. That team that just ensures that the drills are getting taken care of, kind of doing the triage after the drill, what worked, what didn't work, and just making sure that those plans are in place. And then lastly, which has always been in place, but this is the third team outlined in the policy, are the management plan, is the building medical emergency response teams. Each building has a group of staff members who will respond in case of a medical emergency. And those staff members typically have some form of specialized training to support in the, in that situation. The second big change is language around communication protocols. So, the new policy eight or six, or the policy that we hope to adopt, 806, outlines the need to describe the chain of command within our emergency response and how we communicate. So, we've added language to our crisis management plan to describe the flow of decision-making and how we use cellphones, dispatch radios, overhead intercom, Crisis Go and Thrill Share, all communication tools that we use within the district. And the last major change to the crisis management plan is the addition of the standard response protocol language, which we've been talking about for a good year now, and that is now in, in the manual. These plans have been shared with both the policy committee and the education committee, and they support approval as well. Any questions?
I do have a question. On the building, or I mean, the district emergency response team, was any consideration given to including the building and ground supervisor?
Seth?
Yes.
Yes, Seth is a member of that team as well.
Thank you.
And then in addition to that, we do meet with the chief of police, our detectives, and our SRO on a monthly basis. And often, this is on the agenda, just how emergency action plans are going and kind of asking for advice on, on how we respond in certain situations.
I would say thank you to you and the team for working on this. And obviously, these are the, the things we don't want to do, but these are the things we need to have in place. And I, I feel really good about the plans that are in place as a, as a district parent and as a board member, so.
And from the classroom standpoint, I really love the consistency and the fact that everybody's using the same language. The protocol is really clear. That makes it much more manageable in your brain.
Crisis management, the emergency action plans, fast presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Discussion. Do all staff members then get copies of these or?
They're available, but this is a big topic of conversation during workshop. Uh, they're available, but this is a big topic of conversation during workshop week. And then, of course, we drill, are required to drill throughout the year.
So do we have a, a substitute handbook?
Not officially, um, but I, my understanding is every building has substitute folders. And one of the things we talked about this year is making sure that that one pager for standard response protocol goes in there. And that first time that that substitute enters the building, making sure that they're aware of what that is and, and what that would look like. It's a great question.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We've approved the crisis management plans. Thank you. Item number five, consider approval of adult meal and second entree prices for this academic year. Dr. Graff.
All right, so, uh, Megan, our business manager, was unable to be here tonight, so I will do my best to work through this. But each year, uh, we are required to set the prices for our adult breakfast and lunch, um, costs. And that is driven by MDE's guidance. So in your packet is a document outlining those prices. In summary, um, for the prices that we get to set, Emily, uh, Emily Craig, our food service coordinator, and Megan would like to set those prices the same as they are this year. And then for our adult meals and the second entree, we'd like to set those, keeping those where they are today, but knowing that those may change. MDE has not provided us with guidance yet. They're a little bit behind on setting those prices, but we're going to start school soon. So we are recommending keeping the prices where they are with approval to set those at MDE's minimum once that information comes out.
And those increases are typically five to 10 cents?
Yeah, not much at all.
Not much more than that.
The guidance from MDE, um, what, what Megan told me is MDE said, well, just set them five cents higher. Um, but we didn't feel comfortable doing that, not knowing the real numbers.
I don't remember a time that MDE did not have this.
I know, probably this point. We're pretty close. In fact, some schools have probably started. We're close to it.
Some men came in the workshops.
Yep.
Uh, one other thing is if a student wants a full second meal, they have to pay the adult price.
Correct.
That's the one thing that I remember from the business committee that.
They'll subsidize one.
Lunch.
Yeah. Uh, I move to approve the adult meal and second entree prices for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the caveat of adjusting it to the recommended mini- minimums once those are approved of the state.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? No questions. Discussion, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just another curiosity question, if I may. Do we have any idea of the percentage of the students that are partaking of the free breakfast and the free lunches? I'm sorry, the, a percentage of students, free lunches, I'm guessing is a high percentage. How many take advantage, perc- of a percentage of the student body of the breakfasts?
Almost everybody does now.
Is it, okay, okay. So it's being well utilized. That's, that's good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We've approved the prices pending adjustment to the state minimum once the numbers given to us from MDE. Next up, item six, consider approval of behavior, approval of behavior and reading support assistance individual contracts. Uh, we do have two separate items here, but, uh, unless the board desires otherwise, we would approve them in one motion. Ms. Prackey?
Yep, so just to give us some background, as you may recall, last spring, we became aware of and applied for a grant opportunity through Minnesota Department of Education called the AdSys grant. AdSys stands for alternative delivery of specialized instruction services. The goal of this grant is to provide support in the areas of behavior and academics to potentially prevent unnecessary referrals to special education assessment. Um, so we were notified in late May that we did receive the grant, so we, we are very excited about that. This a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars approximately allows us to shift funding from the current behavior interventionist position to the grant to save some, um, move, shift some funds around there as well as add a behavior, um, um, support specialist at North Elementary and St. Peter Middle School and an academic support specialist at St. Peter High School. Those positions were determined based on a needs assessment done by the principals through data review, um, et cetera. As I mentioned, it's about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And following the practice that we've had in the past for our behavior intervention, um, our behavior interventionist, these are individual contracts. Um, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those. Um, I do want to note that the grant is for two years. These contracts are one-year contracts because we're waiting for guidance from, for guidance from MDE regarding any reading requirements and if we need to shift the funds to more of a, uh, that reading side of things. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Prackey?
Are there any minimum education requirements or certificates?
It does require a, a bachelor's degree.
Okay.
In an area.
But not in education or anything like that?
Um, not, no, a related field. So those position, yeah.
I'm happy that it's a two-year, a grant of two years in length. Would like to see more of that or some more stability there, but.
Well, and what, from what, what we've heard from neighboring school districts is this has been ongoing. So it isn't as though after two years, the funding has been cut. You know, we never know what's going to happen, but past practice has been that these grants continue.
So, is it coming from the federal government or the state government?
Megan can better answer that question, but, yeah. But it is a one, right now, we're at a one-year contract.
I will confuse on the hours and duty.
Okay.
Hours and duty days, says the work here shall consist of one thousand seven hundred and forty-six and three-quarter hour days. I'm not quite sure what that means.
It's a hundred and seventy-four, six point.
Seven, five hour days.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's a comma and a space.
No, I, I understand that. Yeah, I thought it's, yeah, one thousand seven hundred and forty-six point seven five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a six point seven five day, hour day, and there are a hundred and seventy-four of them.
Okay, so it's a hundred and seventy-four days, semicolon.
Yep, six point seven five.
Exactly, okay.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
We can certainly make that correction.
I'm sorry?
We can certainly make that addition, the semicolon addition.
Yeah, it's just a, a little bit confusing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for, for asking that. We want to make sure we get it right.
Any other questions before we would make a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the behavior on reading, reading support assistance, uh, individual one-year contracts.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Or questions from Ms. Prackey?
About these positions. Um, and we feel like they're really going to make a difference. And so we're very grateful that, you know, our team found out sort of at the last minute, um, about this and spent some, some quality time together, um, to put that application in. And we're just really grateful that we received it. So, and we are required certainly to provide, um, data to the state and how things are moving along and so on, um, to ensure that we're following those guidelines. I know that's a little bit different than the contract, but wanted to provide you with that information.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We've approved both of the, uh, the behavior and reading support assistance individual contracts. Thank you very much. Thanks, Steve. Next up, number seven, consider the approval of a resolution for MSBA legislative platform. Mr. Kout, it's got your name on it.
I see that. Okay, um, part of the process that MSBA uses to develop its legislative platform is to seek input from school districts. And the school districts can submit proposed resolutions for the, um, delegate assembly, that's usually the first weekend in December, to consider. And if approved by the delegate assembly, it goes into the MSBA platform for the upcoming legislative session. So as we're all painfully aware of, money is extremely tight in education. And trying to get more money added to the formula sometimes becomes extremely difficult. So my idea here is instead of adding more money to the formula or in addition to adding more money to the formula, we add more students to the formula by allowing pre-kindergarten students to count towards your pupil count. And so when you have your per pupil expenditure there that, um, and that's how they figure your basic aid, we and every other school district in the state will get an additional amount of money based on an increase in their student count if they have pre-K kindergarten programs. So the information that has to go is in that form that's in here. And obviously, the stuff that's in the boxes, the boxes slide up and down, so you can't do all that. But if you look at what was included afterwards, um, that kind of was the basis for this information as far as the, um, resolution goes. So we have, um, data from our kindergarten assessments last year. And they'll be doing that again within the first couple of weeks, so we'll include that. And I don't know, E.T., can we go back further than a year?
We do have multiple data that's.
Yeah, so, and hopefully it's as favorable as this past year was. Yeah, so I think including this data gives rationale to this, uh, resolution. Also, because of changes in statute, which now requires salaries to be comparable to the K-12 teachers, which, um, requires that they be in the bargaining unit unless they have their own separate one, I guess. And that, uh, they are now considered as teachers as part of the definitions in PELRA. We therefore think that the students should be considered just like K-12 students. So it'd be my hope that we would approve this resolution. I'll go online and fill it all in and send it to MSBA. And I would like Superintendent Graff to try and bring this to MASA principals, to your, your, uh, principal organizations. I mentioned it to the paraprofessionals because Ed Minnesota is, and they seem to think that that was a good idea. So hopefully, we can get a groundswell of all educational organizations to get behind this and see, see it passed at the legislature. Heaven forbid that we could get a bipartisan approval of anything, but, so.
Certainly appreciate you going back for us.
Well, it was one of those in the shower, early morning, late night ideas that happened. And it was too late to get on the, the delegate assembly agenda last year, but they said bring it forth this year, so hopefully we can get it across the finish line. Well, thank you. So I'll move it.
Yeah, great.
So we have a motion, we need a.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution.
And this isn't a resolution as such that we have to do.
It's, it's a resolution for the delegate assembly, so we don't have to do a.
Around the table, we can just do a.
A voice.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I mean, it's a, it's a great idea. I'm like, how did this not come up before? It seems, like when you see it, you're like, oh, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, well, the statute changes just took place a year ago. So prior to that, the teachers weren't considered teachers for purposes of collective bargaining, PELRA. So costs were different, et cetera, so. When, I'm sure Ed Minnesota went to bat for those individuals to get those changes, but didn't do anything to increase revenue. And there are districts that get scholarship money. We applied for that, my understanding was years ago, did not make the initial cut. Whenever the legislatures increase the scholarship money, they haven't added new districts. It's just the districts that have the scholarships get more scholarships, so.
We used to receive about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in scholarships through the pathway program. And now, at some of that particular pathway, we maybe get ten per year. And all of that was followed into, to different areas of the state.
And I want to congratulate you for trying everything you could to get it into this year, this past year's delegate assembly process. So this is the official way.
Well, I didn't try everything. I didn't get, I didn't get kicked out of the delegate assembly.
I don't know. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Kout, for your work.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider policies for approval with a single reading. Dr. Graff.
So we have a number of policies that have come up in our regular policy review, uh, that require, um, minimal changes based on legislative changes. Uh, so these were brought toward or forward with the policy committee, uh, and they recommended passing them with one reading. So if the group's okay with it, I'll just give you a brief overview of each and then be able to answer any questions. Uh, and please, policy committee, chime in. So we'll start with policy four fourteen, our mandated. So, we'll start with policy 414, our mandated reporting policy. There's an update to a legal reference, is all. Policy 501 is our school weapons policy. There's an update, the MSBA model policy update, dealing with the definition of a dangerous weapon. Dangerous weapon is referred to in the policy, but previously, there wasn't a definition for what that meant. So, they've added that. Student attendance. There's updates to procedure for applying for an excused absence. Previously, policy allowed students' families to apply for an excused absence to school board or superintendent. That has now been removed in the MSBA model policy. Parents need to go to principals. Next one is 516-5, overdose medication. There was a change in legislation that essentially makes it okay to carry naloxone and anti-opioids medication. And that would allow school districts that choose to, to make it allowable for high school students to possess and administer opioid antagonist medication to their peers. So, the model policy had a big note that said optional. Our policy committee chose to not include that in the policy. We do not feel it is necessary for our students to carry that and administer that. Instead, training our students on who to contact in the case of an overdose. Policy 524, internet technology and cellphone acceptable use. There's an update to a legal reference. Policy 602, organization of school calendar and school day. There's an update to a legal reference, and that legal reference signifies that schools are allowed to start before Labor Day the next two school years. Policy 707, transportation of public school students. There's minor updates to language referring to students with disabilities. 709, student transportation safety. They've eliminated the deadlines that were placed on schools for teaching active transportation safety. So, all schools are required to do bus safety training, you know, how to unload, load buses, things like that. But we're also required to teach students how to cross roads, be safe on bikes, pay attention to stop signs, things of that nature. And there used to be deadlines for when that was needed to be completed. They've removed those. Policy 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material. They've added a addition, or a section, rather, that details a district's ability to get rid of school books. So, it is now allowable for schools to get rid of library books, textbooks. They can be donated, they can be disposed of, and so forth. So, once again, those policies were reviewed by the policy committee and recommended to be approved by the board in one reading. Any questions? Or anything to add, policy committee?
You were going through these rather rapidly for my forehead.
Sorry.
The transportation one. Is there still a deadline as far as when the bus transportation has to go?
Yes, yep. It depends on the age group, but it's either within three or four weeks, if I remember correctly. So, that's something all of our buildings do right away. Get in contact with Saints Bus, and we run through that active transportation training right away.
And so, how do we do, like, I mean, some of this seems so common sense. But how do we do bike training, and now, electric bike, and scooters, and?
Believe it or not, and we discovered this by reviewing the policy, it is illegal in the state of Minnesota for an individual under the age of 15 to ride an electric bike. So, that has to be part of the training, is to describe that. So, how we've done it in the middle school is we've done it essentially during advisory time. Same day as bus training, we walk out to the road, and we talk about, this is how we cross the street. Here's how we be safe on bicycles. I know North in the past has done pretty extensive bicycle activities in PE. So, teachers are really creative on how to do it, and it's good stuff. It's just one more thing.
Those scooters scare me.
All right, we need a motion.
I would move that we accept these policies on a first, for a first reading approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. We've approved all of those policies on single reading. Thank you. Yeah.
Policies, so that's why I didn't bring it up with discussion. But what is the policy now relative to radius where in-town students are given bus transportation versus not having bus transportation?
I believe it's one mile.
It is one mile, okay. At one time, it was a half mile, so, okay. Thank you.
And that can be waived, right? Like, if there's a major intersection or something?
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know if any of ours would qualify, but.
And we have a lot of nice new sidewalks.
Yes.
Yeah.
That are helping with safe-to-school routes. All right, that's it for the action items. Next up is information items. Number one, first reading of revisions to the policy manual. Let's go right back to policy.
All right. So, there were two other policies that were reviewed by the policy committee. Those policies are 806, crisis management, and policy 515, privacy of pupil records. Policy 806, we've already talked about. We designed our crisis management manual after this policy. There's some pretty substantial changes in there in regards to communication, chain of command, requirements around maps that the school district has on hand, and then also teams. So, really recommend that people read through that and see if there's any questions. So, last year, when we were thinking about standard response protocol, we created a spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet, there's a line for every new item in policy 806. And we went through, and we put the checkboxes next to them to make sure that our potential emergency action plans meet this policy. So, take a look at that, let us know if there's any questions. Policy 515, protection of pupil records. There was a change in legislation that clarified what is allowable in the state of Minnesota for directory information. So, previously, their policy had essentially the federal guidelines for what can and cannot be shared in terms of student information. And then underneath that was, but in Minnesota, you can't do this, this, and this. So, what the recommendation now is from MSBA is that districts put their own definition in that section based off of the law. So, we have added our definition to that policy. It should be in red on the, like, kind of a maroon color in your board packet. But essentially, what we have described as directory information for St. Peter Public Schools is a student's name, dates of attendance, grade level, enrollment status, participation in officially recognized activities, height and weight of members of athletic teams, and honors and awards received. So, we're following Minnesota's guidelines for directory information. The difference is we're simply stating it in this policy.
Good overview.
Thanks.
Any questions? Otherwise, we'll review them for, to bring back for a second. Yep. So, certainly let Dr. Graff know, or any members of the policy committee. All right.
Both are very lengthy, so popcorn and.
Beverage and some comfy shoes.
Next up, South Elementary breakfast snack schedule. Ms. Akora.
Jana has been working on some efficiencies at South Elementary, and she will share those tonight in regards to snack and breakfast.
Yes, well, before we talk about the efficiency, it's really about kids. And so, as you know, with little humans, you know, activity is really important, fresh air, playing is really important, and also, food is really important for learning. And so, in the morning, previous, previously, our kids would get to school, buses drop off beginning at 7:40, parents start dropping off in the loop, not the parking lot, at 7:40. And kids have an option. They are, they were able to come in and go to the cafeteria for breakfast, or they would go through the doors and out to the playground and have recess. And we found that participation in breakfast was highly dependent on the weather. And we were also finding that kids would play at recess and then come in really hungry and want to have breakfast, but now breakfast was over and they were going to class. So, it was just kind of a difficult decision for five-year-olds to make in the morning between playtime and pancakes. So, we wanted, we wanted to take that decision and just do something better for kids. And so, we know that kids benefit from playing in the morning, and that's also what they really want to do. We also, Minnesota legislation provides free breakfast for all students. So, what we are excited to do at South Elementary is allow all kids to play outside in the morning before school until 7:55, and then come in, and we will serve breakfast as part of our school day. Previously, all of our students received a snack between, like, 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. with their class. Parents paid $20 per academic quarter so that we could purchase those snacks. And admittedly, they were not highly nutritious snacks. They were affordable snacks on $20 per quarter per kid. And so, this, this change, moving away from snack time, so there will not be designated snack time in our day, and moving towards having breakfast for everyone, provides, A, something that's free for everybody, and something that is a lot more nutritious and filling also for everybody. And it allows for that recess before school. So, we feel like this increases likelihood of kids having those basic needs met in the morning right away. We're hoping that this cuts down on health office visits for tummy aches and the need for crackers in the morning before school. And then, we're also, like, that operational efficiency piece. Previously, cafeteria staff are not allowed to help with anything besides designated meals. So, our cafeteria staff could not help with snack. So, we had our Title I reading paraprofessionals helping with snack, and our office staff ordering snack and managing the $20 funds that were coming in every quarter for 300 kids. And so, we are also looking forward to those operational efficiencies. The folks that were doing breakfast will continue to do breakfast, just in a higher quantity. And our office staff will no longer need to be ordering, and our Title I reading staff will no longer need to be organizing granola bars and oatmeal cream pies. So, those are good things. You know, we, some of the concerns I've heard from parents are, well, what if my kid eats at home? Now, they're going to be eating at 8:30 and 11:30. That's a little bit wider gap. And so, those are things we're just going to have to kind of see how it goes. If kids eat at home, they are still certainly welcome. My kids eat breakfast again at school. They're certainly welcome to have a second breakfast. Or if they want to just sit and socialize, they can do that as well. One of the things that I really want to clarify, that I think it's important for you all to know as an informational item, is that instructional minutes, we were able to count snack time as instructional minutes and part of our school day. Meal times, like breakfast and lunch, cannot be included in instructional minutes. So, when Chris Leclair is reporting our minutes to the state, we are losing 15 minutes per day of instructional time. We are still well above the minimum of what's required for elementary schools. We are still 107 hours over, which I think we calculated to 15 days. But I think that's an important piece. So, we're trading 15 minutes for snack for 15 minutes for breakfast. Logistically, it doesn't change, really, the number of minutes that kids are learning in the classroom, but it does change what's reported. So, I think that's important. But yeah, I think, I think this is a good move. We have some logistics yet to figure out with the teaching staff and in communication with parents. But I think overall, this is a really good thing for, for kids, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I can just add, there's a lot of research out there about recess and the power of recess. So, one of the things Jana and I talked about is really using this as an action research project and really trying to see if there's any correlation or connection, if we can see in the data, a benefit to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I like the access. Everybody knows access.
Absolutely. Not choosing.
Great, thank you. Next up, St. Peter facilities use terms and conditions agreement.
Hi, Tammy.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. The purpose of this agreement is really to allow us to have a formal communication with the facility users that we have, so that they understand what our expectations are, and it would minimize any confusion. And it also ensures that we have consistency for outside parties who are utilizing our facilities. So, this is a document that I put together. I researched what a lot of the metro area schools do and just took portions from their policy manuals and applied it. Our plan is, if this is implemented, the process when someone outside of our district contacts us to utilize our facilities, we would send them this, along with asking them for proof of liability. We have a whole system where we have a spreadsheet where we check off that we have done all of these things. A lot of times, groups will contact us many months in advance of the date that they actually want to use our facility. So, the plan would be then, a week before their event happens, we would send this as a reminder to them. These are the things that you agreed to. Do you have any questions?
So, when we built the new high school.
It was really important for the community and for the district to be able to share that space, to make it truly a community place, a community location. And this provides some clarity. It protects both the district and the users, so that everybody knows what's expected. Clear, clear is kind. So, we feel that this is really going to increase our ability to provide the service that people are requesting.
Didn't we have no terms and conditions agreement prior? Or was it just slightly different than this?
We had something, but it wasn't a formal document that groups signed.
Right, it was like.
It was just a little bit of a note that came in the email. Here are our expectations, but there wasn't anything that said they agreed to those.
I also like the reminder just before the event, that this is what is expected.
And here's the, my lema is very well done. Has legal counsel looked at it at all? Is that something that's needed or not needed?
I will defer that to.
We have not gotten this front of the house.
Probably a good idea to, if, when we have questions, to bring that up.
There's an abundance of caution.
Yeah.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it's going to be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, building and grounds update. I think you're on, Seth.
There's only a couple of things going on in the district right now.
I'm actually just putting on another tire right now.
Not literally.
No.
Okay, good.
Nope. Nope, the new alarm system's working beautiful. They've been working on it all week, making sure that happens. So, since the last time I had the opportunity to take you guys around to show you the building, what's going on, is a completely different building, what's going on. The inspector was out there today for an initial visit, and as of right now, there should be nothing holding up our certificate of occupancy, which is going to happen on Friday. The only thing they need to come back check on Friday is they are working on the fire alarm system and then have to get the sprinkler system charged, tested, ready to go, which, that's what they've been working on all week, trying to get both systems integrated, ready to go between phase one, phase two, and phase three. And everything's right on schedule with that one, too. So, we are, we should, as of right now, we are opening Monday for business. Teacher should be there at whatever time they start, 7:00, 7:30. And we should be good to go with parking lots. All the crews are working their hardest to get things cleaned up, get the parking lots emptied out, get things squared away, so we do have, won't have any parking issues. When students show up on the second, I believe, there will be no busing issues. There'll be nothing in the way. Everything should run as smooth as possible. Everything that we wanted to get done, sadly, I can't say, has been done. Everything that we wanted to get done, sadly, I can't say has been done. They'll be working on it a little bit later, some of the terrazzo, the new stairs. They had an issue with the machine, lightning strike hit their plant. That's the only machine in the United States that does that, and they had to get parts from Italy to get it to work. So they were pouring, they were doing the infills on the stairs because they could do that by hand. The pre-cast as of right now is on schedule for August 22nd. We do have a steer, steel stairs in place, and they have been okayed by the inspector that they are safe to use. They do have a kind of a rougher surface on it, so there's gonna be no issues with slipping. There's no rough edges. They went through, checked everything. Is it gonna look as pretty as I want? No. Is it gonna be functional? Absolutely. It's not gonna hold back. So once everything gets done, the crews are going to be working diligently to make up what they haven't been able to get done or been behind on, like MEA breaks, Christmas break, working afternoons, possible weekends to get things to where they need to be to looking as pretty as they are. So there are some things because of supply issues that we've pushed back to phase two. But I would say half the windows have been replaced. There was a supply issue getting them, so they did as many as they could. We're gonna hold off. We moved the other half back to phase two when they do the rest of them. So that one is not gonna hold up anything. It should be good to go for the most part. Might have to deal with a little bit leaking. Not nearly as much, but we should be good to go. Budget-wise, we just had a meeting on Wednesday? Yesterday. And we are on budget, which is a big one. So there's been a few things that showing up a little higher than expected and quite a few things that have come back a lot lower than expected. So I'm gonna take that as a win right now as we're sitting here. Still got two years to go for the project, but everything's looking really, really good. Yeah, any questions? As you can see, since last time you guys seen me, my hair fell out. But we're moving ahead.
Something was different.
Yeah, absolutely. It feels much better. Any questions? Feel free to ask. Yes and no. Yes and no. Even though I was up looking at the Rocky Mountains, I was still working. I wake up in the morning, spend a couple hours answering emails and questions and stuff, and then spend the rest of the day enjoying. So, yep, kind of hard to get away in a situation like this. That's like three years, I'm taking a really long vacation. Any questions?
Yes. Maybe isn't even answerable. It's a long, longer range question.
Yeah.
Obviously, a three-year project. I continue to be concerned about inflationary pressures on materials. Are our costs pretty well established for the next two years or are we risk, at risk or significant?
We're absolutely at risk. There's nothing we can do. I mean, even you look at the tariffs that have been put on, how things have changed on their shipping, availability. We can't say that everything's gonna stay the same. We're just holding out that everything stays close enough.
Suppliers, suppliers can't control it either, obviously.
Exactly right. Yeah, so we're just holding out for that things are gonna stay somewhat stable to where the contractors can hold to what they promised. Yep, well, that's about as good as I can tell you.
Understandable.
Yeah, I would like to say, yep, we're good.
Honesty is good.
Yeah, thanks. We haven't hit it yet.
Yes.
Good. And that comes back to with Ken's question, in the next two years. So we're, we're sitting very well. We're doing okay. Everything is, the forecast over the next three years is we're still gonna be slightly under. But long-range, long-range projection, again, we don't know what's gonna happen. Just keep our fingers crossed, everything stays level. Did that help?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's pretty amazing that this was happening this summer. This is, you guys.
It's insane.
It totally is great.
It is absolutely insane. From when I left for vacation to where I came back, it was completely a different school. It really is. I was blown away. And I actually, when I came back, did a walkthrough. That was one of the first things. I walked through MVAD, then did a walk through the middle school, and I actually felt a little more at ease doing that, seeing where things were at, so, yeah.
Thank you Seth.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Time for reports. Building principals. You seem surprised that you're giving reports. First meeting?
All right, so summer programming certainly has wrapped up. I feel like we would say we had a really successful year at both Summer Stars Academy and Read and Feed, and we'll be providing a report on those numbers at the September meeting. So we're excited to have that wrapped up and, and on to the next thing. Certainly in early childhood, we are anxious to get in our site. Jessie from the middle school and I were able to meet with the movers and with Seth this afternoon and do a little bit of a walkthrough and get a game plan for Monday. I've had teachers requesting to get in early. Certainly, everyone wants to, to get in, but we have, we have full faith, but by, by Monday morning, we will be good to go and teamwork will get things done. That's all I really have this round.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure if you know this or not, but today we welcomed 17 new teachers for New Teacher Workshop. It was a very exciting morning, and that will continue tomorrow. And of course, next week is our workshop for all of our teaching staff. And Thursday, August 28th, as a reminder, it's our district workshop day with breakfast beginning at Gustavus, so we hope that you are all able to join us. At South Elementary, we are preparing to welcome our kids back and welcome our first-time kindergartners. It's a very exciting time. Parent-teacher conferences, of course, for K8 are September 2nd and 3rd, and those links have been sent out. Parents are signing up, and we just really, really want to say that I appreciate the parents that are willing to take a day off or take a partial day off and to come in with their student and spend time meeting the teacher and helping those kids with that transition. That's a, you know, that's a sacrifice and difficult for the adults, but it is very important and appreciated. Again, we have two new teachers at South Elementary, and one of the other new things that I just think is fun to point out is that we have added a fourth imagination station. We previously had a classroom that was used as just kind of like a recharge space when kids needed a break, and there wasn't a lot in there. And we felt we could better use the space by adding some creative play items in there, some gross motor play items. And so that is a fourth imagination station room. It also allows us to have enough imagination station spaces that when we need to have indoor recess, the kids can utilize that more fun space. So that's exciting. And we are also looking forward to implementing some flexible reading groups with some of the things that we learned with Read Act and some of the things that Darren's teachers are doing at North. We're gonna put our own spin on that so that we can really individualize reading instruction. Ashawa Learning Academy, we have 50% new teachers. It is a huge turnover this year, new secretary, new paraprofessionals. And that hasn't happened for a really long time. And so we're just looking forward to starting kind of fresh out there. There's currently 22 clients at the Hoffman Center, so we'll have 22 students and a little bit older age range going into this school year. So things will be different out there. Seth's crew, shout out, did an amazing job. We got some new carpet, we got paint. Gus's team got us a new copier. It feels, we got a new parking lot. Feels like a new place, so it's great. So thanks to them.
Amazing.
I know, good news.
That sounds awesome. All right, well, greetings from North Elementary School, AKA Stage One Summer Hub, K8. And it's gone really well. In fact, Jessie was talking about how thorough of an induction kind of onboarding system St. Peter Public Schools has for their principal team, since she was able to office like just adjacent to me, just down the hallway, like. It, it is like HR department has done a fabulous job just planning that onboarding out. That was really good. All right. Absolutely, it's so good. So anyway, taking a look at, but seriously, no, the summer went really well. It was a really busy, busy place. I mean, we had a lot of students. It didn't slow down at all with, with Read and Feed and summer school and Saints OT and like every time I left there, you know, there's kids playing on the playground, and it felt like it was a regular school day all summer long. So that's, it was, it was super fun. And then community ed also having like activities out on the, you know, they have their trailer they roll in on, so it was cool. It was, it was a hub.
In the circumstance, so sometimes good things come out.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So can't wait for stage two and three of Hub, Hub Nation. All right, so at North, we do are obviously, it's gearing up. The building looks great. You know, we had extra set of hands with custodians from the middle school since they couldn't go to a building anyway. So they, Mike and his crew got North all shiny really quick, even with all that action. So it looks ready to go. We have 459 students registered, about uptick of eight kids as compared to last year at the end of the year, and that, so that's awesome. And we're looking at about 25 or 26 per homeroom out of all 18 sections of homerooms at North. Back-to-school conferences, looked like an average of 77% of the families already registered for conferences, so that's a really good, and that's not it. I mean, we a lot of times push 90% participation, so that is awesome, and that's engagement. And then student, student leadership, we have kindness crew members. The new ones are gonna be inducted here and trained a week from tonight, right on the North Playground, wedding, not wedding, but weather permitting. And so like our, our kindness crew leads, which is our PBS team, have them make tie-dyes, kindness crew, it says on it, do training, like what do you do on the first day? I mean, their big job on the first day is to help shape, you know, get rid of the jitters of incoming new students, the whole second grade crew. So they just gather by the door and they're celebrating that as kids roll into the building and showing leadership. I mean, that's what we're all about. And then also like our student council is gonna be serving up treats. It's one of the first times we've been able to be at our own building on the first day of workshop week. And so they're gonna be serving up treats to all the teachers that first day in the media center, so that'll be awesome. And then keep an eye open for YouTube, you know, that annual music video will be published sometime around that time, so good stuff. That's what's going on at North.
We won't take up quite as much time as our elementary colleagues did. That doesn't mean we don't have just as much stuff to report, but I feel, I believe they used up all of our time. At the high school, one, one important schedule change for our kids is that we're getting rid of daily Saints time. We're, we're a little sad about that. It was especially nice for second chance breakfast and kids who needed extra time with teachers. But with the schedule change, moving math and world language back to, back to skinnied classes, with that extra 20 minutes in there of Saints time, those classes were like 40 minutes, which that you're just taking attendance and getting started and you're releasing them from class. So the only day that we will be having a Saints time is when it's their meeting with their PLPs, and that's on Wednesdays. Rock Bend location, we're excited to get into the community center. We can move in as of Friday, and I'm happy to report that as of today, we're fully staffed. That means two staff members, we've got a teacher who's a new young guy who's really excited about it, and I love the way he talked about kids and opportunities. And special thanks to Tanner Netto, who stepped up and is happy to help out and come out and be the Rock Bend Para. So that's seriously thanks to Tanner Netto. And Wednesday, next Wednesday night is an open house at the high school for all grade level kids and parents. There's a specific time, I believe, it's 5 o'clock for ninth graders and their parents. They're not, it's not a requirement. We did a lot in the spring, but they can tour around the building and try to figure out their schedules and classrooms the week before everybody else arrives. And our kids are starting Tuesday, the 2nd.
Construction, construction, construction. Yeah, so I just want to say a huge thank you to Seth, Bryce, and Logan and Tara from ICS. I have felt like I have been very much informed throughout this process, and that has allowed me to communicate to our staff what to expect on Monday. So we were just there at 3 o'clock and 4 o'clock today, and it's coming along, so thank, thank you. So it's, it's gonna be what it is, and so we've just gotta go in and be excited that we're back in the building. And honestly, it kind of gets to this point of the school year where I'm ready to be back in the building, where I get to see people and students, and so let's get that rolling, right? So.
Out of North?
Yeah, out of North, yeah. So, I mean, Darren and I, well, you know, just for the year, and then I think I'll be back next year, so, yeah. It's been a great, it's, honestly, it's, it's a bittersweet, and I've said that I think I would have been lost just by myself at the middle school. And so having everyone there to kind of help support and rally and ask questions, it really has been a blessing in disguise. So I know it's probably been a big headache for Seth, but thank you to me, so. We're finishing up enrollments. We have roughly 36 new students, K5 through 8, so that's exciting. Yeah, so really exciting. We had four, our four new teachers today, so our middle school teachers, got to meet them, and I hired some of them, I did not hire some of them, but I'm excited to welcome them on board. They seem great. They've got the great mindset for a middle school teacher and what is about to happen, so I'm excited for that piece of it. First parent caregiver, Some More went out. This is our newsletter, that we're just going to be updating our parents on the things that are gonna happen, happen at the middle school, and it's gonna be a great opportunity to showcase what our teachers and our students are doing throughout the school year, so really excited for that. Got some great feedback from some parents already within the middle school, so. And we are actually, because we didn't have our transition for our fifth grade, fourth grade coming to fifth grade, huge thanks to Michelle Dozy, who is organizing for any student who is new to the district and new to middle school. She's creating kind of a get to know you, what do you, what to expect middle school on August 29th. So we'll be doing that with 36 new of our, our enrolled students, so that's what we got going on at the middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Graff.
I would just like to echo the excitement and the thanks. There is so much work that goes into getting the school year ready, from squaring budgets to setting schedules to cleaning the floors, and our staff is incredible. So just a huge thank you and super excited for opening day, week of September 1st.
Happening soon. Awesome. Anything else? All right. Board members around the table, Mr. Russell.
Two, two things. First of all, the school backpack program with, which you are all very familiar with, is wrapping up, and it's been, excuse me, a labor of love. Numerous people, large number of businesses have contributed. There were three of us who went around picking up the barrels that you see at the various businesses. We did that last Friday, and I, my pickup's not very big, but I had to make two trips, which is a, a good thing. And one of the academic conference rooms at Gustavus is full of school supplies. Also, one of the Mankato moving companies is very graciously stored in one of their trailers, a large number of supplies, and they'll be delivered next Tuesday. And obviously, you guys are gonna be rather engaged next week. But anybody who's interested in helping out and sorting materials by grade level for the, that's gonna be on Tuesday at Johnson Hall at the fairgrounds, and then again, Wednesday morning, and that'll be them putting together backpacks per grade and then storing them, and then I believe it's at 4 o'clock, families can start coming in and picking up their backpack. It's kind of fun, and that's the culmination of it. And the students get to pick out the color backpack they want, as long as they're early. And it's fun, it's a good deal. So if anybody's interested in helping out, we always need assistance, so please feel free, Johnson Hall next Tuesday, starting later in the afternoon, and then on Wednesday morning, somewhere around 8 o'clock until, until finished. That's it.
Yeah, I'll do this now as far as committees also. Negotiations, we'll have our third meeting with the custodians tomorrow. I believe we're making progress, so keep your fingers crossed. Next Wednesday, we're supposed to meet with food services. Is that gonna bother your open house? Okay. And then we have, we've met with Paris. We have two meetings. We have two meetings scheduled in September for, with the Paris, and our office support people, we've met once with them and have not set up another meeting yet, but we'll be working on that down the road. Haven't heard from the other groups yet, have we, officially? So, that's where we're, where we are in negotiations. It's keeping me busy.
Renaite.
Yes, just one thing, the Native American Parent Advisory Group, the NAPAC, is hosting on the 25th, a back-to-school, kind of a picnic for Native American families. They'd like to invite, invite the board and administration to come and participate. There'll be walking tacos and some games and some door prizes and so on. So, be at Minnesota Square from four to five, four to six, something like that. Check your, check your schedules. That's it.
Thank you. Any updates from any committees that didn't get a chance to share those already? Obviously, heard from policy, heard from business and negotiations already? Any other updates?
Things like education committee have come up in tonight's meeting, so.
Shared Programs Committee did meet last week. Bill, Tracy and I, and then members from the city council, Dr. Graff and Mr. Prafki were there. Kinda just covered topics that popped up that we felt like we could discuss or wanted to discuss, like we did with our joint city council and school board meeting. It was that kinda thing, just a wide range of topics that are mutual interests. So, no decisions, of course, in that committee meeting, but just lots of conversation about lots of things. So, it was a good productive meeting. I think we're gonna meet quarterly-ish moving forward to keep conversations going between the two groups. Yep.
Cause they talked about the fifth Thursday.
Yeah, I don't think we've settled on it, but that made me think it must be about quarterly cause there isn't a fifth Thursday every month, so. Stay tuned.
I didn't catch that part.
Yeah.
I meet with Mr. Prafki coming up here, so we'll lash that out.
We have several upcoming meetings of the board, more HR and negotiations committee, of course, business committee, policy, education, all of them meet before we're back here in a month, Wednesday, September 17th, in this room at five o'clock.
This committee, we, we met like all the committees have done recently. And the budget tracker, we're following that closely. Megan does a wonderful job with that, as does John, and the committee is tracking the funding and doing the best we can with that. Enrollment, good to hear the numbers are where they're at. As of the date of our last meeting, we're up about twelve students. I'm not sure if that's changed since that time, but the trend is positive.
Awesome, yeah, it is good.
And we hope to bring that to the full board at an upcoming meeting, September meeting.
Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor? I know, meeting is adjourned. Despite your protests, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.